Can we have the roll call?
Chair Paul?
Yes, President.
Vice Chair Barbette?
Present.
Commissioner Barber?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Present.
Commissioner McCarron? Commissioner Spear? And Commissioner Wyler?
Okay, next item is approval of the minutes from the March 26, 2024 meeting. And I have one concern on the first item, the first public hearing. Commission action is on page seven of the minutes. It says, "Motion to approve Planning Commission Resolution Number 2024-04 with the removal of specific planning division condition E3." And that wasn't exactly Commissioner Wyler's motion. His motion was to approve the resolution with the removal of the landscaping requirement on the property line that orders 78. And planning division condition E3 is not exactly that. E3 says, "The applicant shall provide a fencing wall plan exhibit upon initials in the middle of their landscape plan check, which shall show at minimum installation of a metal tubular panel security fencing along the SM78 property boundary of the subject site. The exhibit shall depict how the security fence will adequately screen recycling materials and storage materials, subject to the satisfaction of the Health and Service Director or the designated. This may be done in combination with adjacent planting and enhanced landscaping, including, not limited to, deciduous climbing vines or showups to a mature height of 10 feet zero inches or more." So this does have to do with screening on the 78 line, but it also includes the fencing, which is a requirement that they provide, the fencing and the panels. There is another condition, D3, under landscaping that says, "If at the time of planning final inspection, it is determined that sufficient screening is not provided, the applicant shall be required to provide additional landscaping improvements to the satisfaction of the planning division." And that's actually the condition that I was most concerned about, that the applicant wouldn't know about landscaping requirements until much later, towards the end of the project. And so that was my concern, D3. I see that there is a little bit of overlap with the E3. Can I repeat that? No. So I think the motion in the minutes should at the minimum be changed to the Resolution 2024-04 with the removal of landscaping requirements on the property line that borders 78. That was the motion.
Your motion?
That's my motion.
Second?
Call for the roll.
Can I just clarify the motion? Is the motion to approve the minutes as amended by stated by Chair Paul?
Yeah, if that staff understands that and if that's satisfactory to staff.
Could you just clarify, are you motioning to remove the landscaping components from both of those conditions, all conditions, or one of those conditions?
Removing them from the property boundary that again, it's up against 78. I don't know which, however, I don't know a better way to describe that property line.
So to clarify, though, you're not targeting a, the motion was, you're trying to clarify that the motion from the prior meeting was not targeting a specific condition, but a qualifying component of all conditions?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Vote? Yes, so the digital displays are not working at this moment, so we'll be doing a roll call for the vote. Motion to approve from Chair Paul, with a second, from Commissioner Barber. Chair Paul?
Yes, approve.
And Vice Chair Barbette?
Approve, thanks.
Commissioner Barber?
Approve.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Approve.
And Commissioner Spear?
Approve.
The vote is five-zero to approve the minutes with the directions as recommended by Chair Paul.
Thank you. Next is written or oral communications. Do we have anyone that wants to speak on an item not on the agenda? That's a note. Current business, PL 24-0082, 2023 Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
Thank you very much, and good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Priscilla Roldan. I'm an associate planner here in Development Services Division at the City of Escondido. And today I'm here to provide you all with an update on the Housing Element Annual Progress Report. This is the first of three reports in which I'll be bringing forward in the next couple months. But before I begin, I do want to ask if you guys are able to see the presentation in your computer?
Yes.
There are a lot of graphics involved, so hopefully you'll enjoy it. So Government Code, Section 65400, requires staff to update decision makers, the public, the California Department of Housing and Development Services, as well as the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, on our efforts to implement the housing element. Today's presentation seeks to provide an update on this housing element pursuant to state law, so there is no fiscal impact associated with this presentation or item, and there's no formal action. The only request today is just to receive and bow this presentation. So I'm going to jump in with today's presentation by beginning with a bit of background on the housing element. I will then highlight progress towards meeting the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is the number of units a city should build in order to meet future growth, housing growth here at the city. And I will conclude today's presentation by providing some next steps. The housing element is one of 10 chapters in the City of Escondido's general plan. It is unique in the sense that it's updated in accordance to the California Department of Housing and Community Development timeline. State law has tasked HCD to assess and reassess housing across the state since 1969, and every eight years, HCD looks at the state of housing, collects data from different, from population projections, and determines the amount of housing needed in order to meet future demand and growth in California. State law also requires HCD to collaborate with our regional council governments to determine what's known as the Regional Housing Need Determination. This is the number of housing units that regions will need in order to build or meet future housing demand in California. Once HCD determines this need, regional council governments are then tasked with developing a methodology that will accommodate the projected needs determined by HCD, and also by following special parameters set by state code. This includes looking at the availability of land within each member jurisdiction, existing and projected jobs, the transportation network, sewer and water capacity, and other factors. In 2018, in consultation with the San Diego's Regional Council Governments, the San Diego Association of Governments, also known as Sandag, HCD determined that there will be a total of 171,685 units needed in order to meet future growth by 2029. Pursuant to state law, Sandag was then tasked with developing methodology and allocating the regional housing needs determination among its member jurisdictions. That includes the 18 cities as well as the county. In 2019, Sandag Board of Directors, as well as HCD, approved the methodology, and as a result, Escondido was allocated a total of 9,607 units to build by 2029. In order for these housing units to meet everyone's housing needs, people of all incomes, these 9,607 units were distributed by income. That is very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income. Every year, we come to you, forward to you, City Council, the public, as we provide an annual progress report to the state, to report on the progress towards meeting the housing element, and that includes the progress made towards these regional housing needs allocations. This includes reporting on permits that were submitted and approved by the planning division, permits issued and finalized by the building department, as well as reporting on grant-funded efforts, housing element programming, and surplus land activity. By far, the largest component is reporting on the RENA numbers, which, as you've seen before, it's a total of 9,607 units. On your screen, you can see the different allocations. And the year one of reporting, back in 2021, staff reported a total of 249 units credited towards RENA. In year two, which was 2022, staff came forward and reported a total of 231 units. And today, we are providing an update, and we are reporting a total of 608 units to credit towards RENA. It's important to note that only permits or developments that have been issued building permits count towards this credit. And in 2023, developments like Palmer Heights, the Warrentown Project, as well as Del Prado counted towards the 608 units. To date, we have a total of 1,088 units to count toward the 9,607 units the city must build by 2029. This is a visual of the table that I went ahead and showed earlier. It's broken down by income, so as you can see, starting from left to right, for above moderate, the above moderate count, there's a total of 843 units that attributed towards the total of the allocation, amounting to a total of 17% of progress to date. Similarly to the moderate, there is a total, oops, sorry, a lot of graphics. There's a total of 40 units for the 1,527, which accounts to 3%. For low, there's a total of 111, or 1249, amounts to 9%. And then for very low, 94 units to credit towards the 1,864, which amounts to 5%. As part of the housing element reporting, staff is also required to provide updates on entitlements made by the planning division. This includes permits that were approved by decision makers. So in 2023, the planning division received and approved a majority of market rate applications. These are housing projects that have the average price that you'll typically find like on Zillow. The division received a small amount of moderate, low, and very low income applications, which resulted to less than a quarter of the received and approved applications for the 2023 calendar year. Most permitted units by the planning division were multifamily units and ADUs. Staff is also required to report on building permits. So when a developer comes into the city and receives approval by different city departments like the planning division, and receives a blessing by decision makers, a developer can submit a permit to the building division and get approval by getting an issued permit, which is basically the permission to construct a unit, or getting a permit finalized, which basically means that a home is good to go and good to move into. And in 2023, there was a relatively even amount distribution of constructed units in the city by income, with the exception of moderate units at 8%. And the majority of constructed units by type were multifamily and ADUs. In 2023, as it relates to efforts to housing element programming, staff focused their energy mostly on getting the housing element certified by HCD. This required the adoption of the East Valley Specific Plan, which was a critical component. HCD finally certified the housing element back in December of 2023. And another notable highlight from 2023's calendar year Housing Element Annual Progress Report is the construction of the Valley Senior Homes, in which National Core began accepting applications for in June 15 of 2023. And finally, the Rent Review Board approved a total of four short and two long applications for the 2023 calendar year. And next year, staff will continue to work on implementing the housing element programming by complying with state law through the pre-application ADU program, some ordinance updates, and a focus on HCD priority programs. As far as next steps, staff will present this document to City Council as mandated by state law on April 17, 2024. We will resubmit to HCD, OVR, and Sandag, and then we will continue our annual progress reporting, the general plan annual progress report, and through the Climate Action Plan Annual Progress Report. Thank you so much for your time, and I welcome any questions.
Anyway?
But I do want to thank you for an excellent report.
Right, Barry?
Thank you for your report. I do have a question or two, and I'm trying to refer back to, maybe you'll be familiar with what portion this is found in, where my question is drawn from, what the language is. Program 2.9 requires a city conduct a residential sector feasibility study. In the event of affordable units are not anywhere on track, with the projected RENA allocations after two consecutive APR years, the city's 2023 APR numbers have shown that permitted low and very low income units are comparatively lower than above moderate developments, than above moderate developments, triggering Program 2.9's requirement. I'm just trying to understand how we get to that. Permitted low and very low income units are comparatively lower than above moderate developments. When I look at the numbers in the report, I'm looking at, for example, the RENA targets. The RENA targets for six cycle are for very low, 19% of our allotment. And the numbers there for moderate, pardon me, low are 13%. When I look at the permits issued or occupancies, we're hitting 26% for very low and 31% for low. The targets for, yeah, the targets for, for example, above are 52% by RENA allocation, and we're hitting 35. So I'm seeing the, we're exceeding our allotment percentages for low and very low, and we're not hitting them for high. So I'm trying to figure out how we get this conclusion that you're stating that apparently has some trigger as well.
So I can go ahead and answer that for you, Commissioner Spear. Thank you for that question. So the way that this program was initially designed was towards all aggregate affordable units, which would be low, very low, and moderate income units. When you totaled the assigned RENA for those three income categories, it totals 4,640 total units. The design of this program was that if each annual reporting year, if the amount of units being permitted, meaning issued building permits that count towards RENA, is not on track, and on track would, staff had defined that as taking that total and devising it by eight years in the planning period, which averages 580 units of affordable units per year. If we are not on track two consecutive years at that number, it would trigger this program. Even though the program has been triggered, that just means that staff will now work towards initiating or pursuing, researching funding opportunities to potentially pursue that program based on current staffing capacity. That's not something that's going to happen immediately, but it is something that we will be following in accordance with the adopted housing element.
I understand what you're saying is, we're not hitting our targets, therefore we trigger.
That is correct.
But that's not what this says. This says permitted low and very low income units are comparatively lower than above moderate developments.
So if you would like to advise us to change that language, we're happy to take that into consideration and modify language accordingly before presenting to council?
I would suggest that it be, because of the percentages that we're showing, it's actually the opposite, so that statement wouldn't be accurate. I would advise maybe correcting that to be accurate.
Anything else, Barry?
Nope.
So I did have a question about the Valley Senior Facility. Can you explain a little bit more about who's moved in to that versus who was intended for it? Did we meet our goals there?
That is a wonderful question, Chair Paul. I do not have the answer to that, unfortunately, as I did not participate or I wasn't in the city at the time, but I'm happy to follow up with an answer for that.
Okay, thank you. And nobody else. All right. So this is a receivable file. Do you want us to take a vote?
There's no need to take a vote at this time.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Future agenda items. Oral communications? For us, if you will. Okay.
I would like to suggest that we, or propose that we have as a future agenda item, a discussion on conditional use permit revocation for noncompliance.
I second.
And you want a, give me some more detail, staff presentation on how to recall one, how to revoke one?
I don't know that I would request staff to spend time. What I would like is for the Planning Commission, that we have in our city ordinance, we have a code on this. I'd like to discuss that code.
Okay.
At that meeting, and I don't know, I don't know if it involves any time, maybe we'll get Veronica's chime in on this. We could read that section of the municipal code and discuss it as a planning commission and go through that. That's what I had on.
If that is what is being requested, that's satisfactory. Due to staffing capacity, we won't be providing a presentation. We'll provide a one-page staff report. I will defer to Dare, our staff representing City Attorney's Office, on the discussion surrounding interpretation and application of that section of the code when there isn't a project or applicable development before the commission, if she has anything to add.
I think we're just going to need to be careful about the discussion, and I'm not sure exactly what you have in mind for discussion, but, you know, per the bylaws, you're able to put it on the agenda, and we can have that discussion, but we do have to be careful in that discussion not to touch on any, anything that's actively being handled at staff level in terms of, you know, current CUP and that sort of thing. And then if there are questions about interpretation, those might not be able to be answered during the meetings, so.
I have a question, follow-up question to that. If the, if the code states that we have revocation, that the Planning Commission has the ability to perform a revocation based on noncompliance, can we discuss an item that is in noncompliance? Or do we have to state that particular case in order to have that discussion?
Right, that would have to be something agendized. We can't discuss a particular case.
Okay.
The item you've raised could be a general discussion.
Perhaps I'll change my motion then. I'll be more specific with the motion. And the motion then would be to discuss specifically the noncompliance violations of the interface.
So.
Sorry, actually, I mean, I think that's something actually, Planning Commission is not able to discuss because it is an ongoing CUP, and that's actually not something that Planning Commission can agendize.
I believe there's a section in the bylaws that says the commission can't agendize items that could be before the commission within the next 12 or 24 months, and so it is possible that a CUP that has been granted could come before the commission, should they be or have a potential future violation that triggers revocation. I think I agree with Dare that it wouldn't be able to be agendized in that manner.
Help me understand, how does something like that get agendized for Planning Commission then? What is the process?
I'd have to look into that, to be honest. I don't have an answer for you right at the moment. I'll have to look into the bylaws. I'm not sure it can be, to be perfectly honest. I'm not sure the commission, but I'll take a look into that.
Okay, in that case, I will leave my motion as it stands.
You mean your original, you'll go back to your original motion?
The general motion, yes.
Okay, and you still have a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay. So Veronica, could you put that on the next agenda?
For the general CUP revocation of noncompliance discussion item?
Right.
Yes.
Okay. So we have, the policy is two members say yes, so we'll do that. You don't need to vote on that. Okay. Planning Commissioners report, so, does somebody want to go? Planning Commissioners report? Okay, I'd like to.
Anything to report, this one we're having discussed. We can comment on it.
Yes, sir.
Firstly, I'm very sorry to know three familiar cases. I do want to stick you allow two of the type of commissioners, though, because I'm very caring and I have first appointed two that have a lot of experience, and I, for one, already ship on a course direction of this term of Auburn, for both of you, so both of you did help get better, I mean Commissioner. I've also got to know both of you personally, outside of the meetings, and I just want to mention that, I know many people who are excellent planning commissioners, I think both of you are sort of the right people.
I also want to think I'm turning to you on this one. At our next meeting, there's not going to be a chair or a vice chair, so can I make a recommendation or a motion for one of the planning commissioners to temporarily sit in the chair to open up the meeting?
And actually, we've looked at the bylaws prior to this, Veronica, and I checked the bylaws, and it does state that the city planner will work to choose a commissioner to open the meeting, and the first order of business will be to vote on a temporary chair to chair that.
Okay, very good. Okay, and I just wanted to say, it's been an honor to serve on, to serve the city in this capacity, and certainly an honor to have been chosen to be the chair for this past year, and I want to thank everyone in the world.
I'd also like to say the same. It really has been a great ride. I've really enjoyed it. It's been professionally really interesting, as well as personally interesting, to get a sense of how systems work, so thank you for your presentation tonight. I meant to say that earlier. Thank you all. It's been really wonderful.
Okay. City Planners Report, tentative future agenda.
Thank you, Chair Paul. So I have to admit, Commissioner Barber stole some of my thunder by being ahead of the curve there.
That's what I live for.
So at the next meeting, we will choose a chair and vice chair. It just so happens, as Commissioner Barber pointedly noted, that our chair and vice chair won't be present at that meeting, so as Dare noted, we'll choose accordingly and work accordingly to make sure that's situated. After that, or on that note, I know Commissioner Wyler isn't present, and Commissioner Wyler will be returning. However, for the three commissioners who won't, I've been in the seat for a very short amount of time, but I've been in front of you for a couple of years now, and appreciate all of the insights and technical knowledge, technical expertise, lived experience, and attention to detail that you all have brought to the commission, and the work that you have put in to serve our community here with the city. I know that you all were looking to be reappointed, and we had quite a breadth of applicants. It was a large pool. We hope to see your faces here at Planning Commission meetings, maybe as residents or interested parties, should we have projects or policy items. If you ever have questions, you know you can always reach out to me, even though you aren't a commissioner. You know all my information probably by heart at this point, but just to thank you, from staff to you all, for serving the community. So with that, on the tentative future agenda, we will be having a 4/23 meeting. That will be the first That will be the first meeting with the new seated commissioners, so we won't have any development projects before the Commission. Instead, we will have a information study on the overall land development review process, which I believe came before this Commission back in January of last year, and we will be bringing back the Planning Commission work plan to identify where we are in that two-year implementation cycle. But we do anticipate meetings in, the, the first meeting in May occurring as well, and I will be following up with all the commissioners regarding the second meeting in May, which is the day after Memorial Day, so trying to identify whether we will have quorum for that meeting. And that concludes my report.
And if you'll please put the CUP on that.
And the CUP will be on the four twenty-three agenda.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.